I do have to work for a living, yes. Allegedly. It is Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council Roll Call.
Susan Skiers?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Michael Libby?
Here.
Lauren Campbell?
Here.
Teresa Harms?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
See the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You approve of the agenda?
I approve.
Sir?
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Item three, public forum. This is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes. Any public comment?
You are it, Flash.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Before approval, I have a question for the greater good for item I. This is for Justin or AJ, I guess, if you will. So the STBG funds. The. It's twenty-twenty-nine, is that right? Okay. So. When do they have to be spent by?
Come on, Justin. Come on up.
Get him a wireless.
You are the next contestant.
Lucky me. What I win? I think it's.
We are your client.
Well, technically, you have twenty-eight ones as well, so it just gets extended out a couple of years, even though they're there. That's why. But you can go after them again, so it just kind of gets pushed off.
So if they're awarded. I think my concern is if they're awarded and then, you know, we don't. Get a raise grant, right? Because then we're talking about what?
We're still planning in the CIP to construct Seventy-third Street improvements in twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-one with or without a raise grant.
Which would be. Three years after we'd be awarded the STBG funds, right?
Yeah, but how they would work is so we could, I put in the application that we're probably going after it again. So if you get something, we could go after it next year. So it just kind of pulls it together and you just change the step where it actually gets allocated to.
Okay.
So we'll be able to retain those funds and expend them in twenty-three, twenty-thirty-one if we construct it in that time.
Hmm, okay. That's, that's the question.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because you already have seven hundred thousand from twenty-eight, so.
All right.
So no risk, all reward is what I'm hearing.
Sure.
Okay.
The risk is it's a source of federal funds and a lot of other things tied to that, so hopefully you get more.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
All right, five A, consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty-five oh-six related to the raise grant application for Seventy-third Street South.
Second.
AJ or Justin?
Third time's a charm, we hope. Gunner and Addison with the MPO and Justin with Fulton and Mink, as well as city staff, been working on the raise grant application again this year. I think we've put together a very good application. There's a number of updates to it. Just a couple of the big highlights is the addition of the pedestrian bridge over Walnut Creek increases our score in two of the five categories that they look at for raise applications. So it's a big addition to the project, but has the potential good payoff for us as far as strengthening the application by bringing in Des Moines and West Des Moines, increasing pedestrian connectivities there. So. That is included in the application this year. Additionally, we've added some additional environmental components, some additional sensors and cameras to our stoplights to try to synchronize those better, increase efficiencies. And also reworked some of the other scoring cost benefit systems that are in that raise grant application. So. This is a. Indicating for the grant purposes that we will fund at least twenty percent of the Seventy-third Street project as defined, so that's just over four million dollars if we receive the grant award. If we don't receive the grant award, I think we'd still move forward with an application again next year, but then as our previous conversation went, we'd probably start planning on construction with any SPG funds and city bonds sometime in twenty-thirty or twenty-thirty-one thereafter. One big factor outside of our control in the current scoring process for the raise grant application is we're not defined as a historically disadvantaged population area. It's possible that that as a scoring category or a component of the raise grant could change going forward under the new administration, so that's one thing to keep an eye on for any future raise grant applications, but. Otherwise, the application looks very similar to last year. We did ask the feedback committee from the DOT of whether we could reuse our letters of support from elected officials and other parties from last year. They said that would be fine, so we did not rework those this year. We'd probably freshen them up again next year if we need to resubmit them. Happy to answer, answer any questions, Justin, Andy, anything else to add? Thanks.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Item five B, consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty-five oh-five, a resolution for adopting the twenty-twenty-four Polk County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second.
The normal seconders aren't here, I'm sorry.
Wake up.
Chiefs, do you have anything that you would like to highlight on the plan?
I got the next one.
The other than all those changes that the city requested was submitted to Polk County and they were, they were good with all those changes.
Yeah, and they know.
Can you please come?
It's kind of hard to hear.
Please come to the dais.
Can we, maybe we can get them a microphone.
The requests we had were some changes that City Administrator Plaguey presented with me. I sent those off to Polk County and they, I told them that we would accept it with those conditions and they said they would get them updated. So essentially to have council pass it as it was and they would make sure that the changes got taken care of.
This has been an ongoing process. I think we gave some feedback probably seven or eight months ago on this. It's a lengthy document and the mayor had caught a couple of additional changes that we needed to make in there, so. Those are reflected in.
Yeah, many changes over many months, so.
Questions or discuss?
Can I just ask, so there are still some changes that haven't been updated by Polk County yet and is that what I was understanding?
Really shouldn't have sat down, Jim.
Sorry, Chief.
Quite all right. I was jumping the gun. No, the changes that we wanted have already been submitted, so everything should be taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Hearing nothing further, roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Item five C, consideration of equipment revolving program ambulance acquisition.
So.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a thermometer.
All right, a little more formal. James Mees, Fire Chief, Windsor Heights Fire Department. At this time, over the last few months, we have been looking at vendors to replace an ambulance. We formed a committee, we had five staff. We grabbed people from full-time staff and part-time staff because I want a broad range of experience levels and understandings of what we would want long-term. As of right now, we did contact three vendors, three very qualified vendors that are very familiar to our area. You have that information. At this time, what we're requesting is authorization to continue discussion with the vendors and we're requesting that at the next city council meeting, we give you a more in-depth presentation and we finalize a decision on whether it's something that we want to move forward with. Does anybody have any questions with the information we got?
Does the, does your committee include the. The program that backup, the backup ambulance program, the backup equipment shared, does that include?
Are you talking like a shared resources type of thing down the road?
Yeah.
Essentially, yes and no. If something like that were to happen, that ambulance would set us up with that. We would just continue to operate out of the older one unless it broke down and we need to utilize the other one. I think long-term for something like that, we would want to move forward a couple of years down the road and get another one to replace our current.
Sure.
Aging ambulance that I am consistently spending some money on to keep it running, which that's the way it goes.
So I didn't know if you got, if you were getting input from any of the other area fire departments on, on equipment options.
Yeah, and as of right now, I know that Clive and Urbendale have been in continual talks and they're working through the legal side of how do we share these resources, how do we ensure and all that stuff? And I've been assured, talking to the Clive Fire Department and their Fire Chief, that once they get stuff squared away, it's going to be much more streamlined for an apartment like Windsor Heights or a department like Waki to get integrated into a long-term program.
And maybe my question should be, do, what, what type of ambulances do some of our neighboring communities have?
It's kind of all over.
Okay.
Waki has Hortons. We currently have a Wield Coach. Our recommendation is, at this time, is going to be a. Legacy emergency vehicles. I wish Brian was here. He's much more prepared. Brian was the chair of the ambulance committee, so I'm kind of filling in.
On an active call right now, right?
Yeah, he's, he's out saving lives. But yeah, kind of, kind of all over the board. It isn't as integrated as like Pierce Fire Engines. Like our new Pierce engine, everybody has Pierces. It's not quite like that in EMS. I think Clive, Clive has two different styles. Norwalk has two or three different. So a lot of times you're going with the design you want or the price you want and stuff like that. I will say at this time, if you did take a minute to look at my recommendations, our recommendation is not the cheapest. It's about sixty-five hundred dollars more. But we brought into consideration that they, they are an Iowa-based company. They're built in Iowa. The maintenance is taken care of out of Pearl, which is just south of Norwalk. So if we ever did have any issues and the salesperson completes a lot of the maintenance issues themselves. And they also, if you purchase from them, they offer loaner ambulances if something happens to yours. All things appealing to us as a committee and we did like the general layout of the ambulance and how well they worked with us, but it was competitive. So, but we can discuss that more at the next council meeting, but I am requesting that, that is on the agenda and we make a decision and move forward with it because I will say the quotes are good for about thirty days. I am going to reach out to the vendors tomorrow and request. If they don't cover that timeframe, that they give us a couple more weeks.
Sure.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lauren, were you also asking, was like Chief Garcia, was he on the committee from Clive, the chief from Clive, like the chief from Urbendale, were they also on the committee for looking at this ambulance because they would have some sort of influence with us because we are doing the shared service? Is that what I was understanding your question being?
No, the, no, my question was more around the, like the backup equipment that we've talked about looking at in the future, that we would be the, the home of the backup ambulance and then another station is the home of the backup fire truck. So if our fire truck is in the shop and sensible only have one in the future, that we would have theirs as the loner, so that, that backup equipment. Plan, I forget what it was, how.
I can't answer that question, though.
Okay.
I did talk to Chief Garcia about this, Councilor Skiers, and just trying to keep ahead of the, ahead of the game and asked if there was any preference between departments and was pretty much told, get whatever you want. So there was no discernment either way, whether we got a Horton, whether we got a Lifeline, whether we got an Osage, didn't really matter to another Fire Chief. So does that answer the question? I think that's where you were going with it.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief, just I guess to highlight procurement on any of these is going to take eighteen-plus months.
Yeah, actually, one vendor was three years. Osage had a very slight potential about a year, but just depended on if that was still there and somebody else didn't grab it. If we couldn't get that one, it'd be eighteen months and Lifeline was approximately eighteen months. So we're looking at about a year and a half.
Twenty-twelve, it's not something we have the luxury of waiting too long and making a decision at this point.
Yeah, yeah. A week or two is not going to kill us, though, and it gives opportunities to discuss. If you have any questions about this, talk to me or Lieutenant Jones, so.
Awesome.
Because it is a bit, a big expenditure. It's just under four hundred thousand, under budget, our recommendation. Anything further?
Let's say form a motion to table this request, then. That's the ask. Correct?
Yes.
Michael, did you hear that?
Yes, yes, sir, I did.
Okay, you, you did make a motion. Are you, are you okay with making a motion, making that a motion to table for one week? Well, to our next council meeting?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five D, consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty-five oh-seven, a resolution accepting the acquisition of real estate interest and authorizing acquisition of such real property. Whose is this? Is it yours?
It's me.
Okay. Wow, us.
Definitely Thursday, isn't it? Not Monday anymore.
Permanent move to Thursday.
Spicy. So this is a continuation of a prior discussion to acquire eleven-fifty-one sixty-fifth street. This is within our urban renewal area. It is a property that we have listed in our zoning areas, sort of a transitional section of properties that would eventually move towards a mixed use or commercial development. And as we've talked about it, because of the number of single-family homes on relatively small parcels, the development community doing that independently, aggregating these properties is unlikely. And so the thought is the city could, as these properties become available, make the acquisitions eventually aggregate enough of them for a large enough flat to be redeveloped. The recommended purchase price was previously a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The property owner has accepted that purchase price. Andy and I have walked through the property a second time. We did scope the sanitary sewer lateral because a portion of that was orangeburg. It is functional. No concerns, I guess, in relation to it, at least, working for the near future, although it's, it's orangeburg, so it's, it's always questionable. We were not able to go upstairs because the existing tenant wasn't providing access. They do have a dog, so we didn't feel comfortable walking into that. But the purchase agreement is contingent on the property being fully vacated prior to closing and us having the right to walk through it and address any concerns relative to changes in the condition of that upstairs from the pictures that we were provided from about six months ago. Still plan to have Lutheran Family Services and potentially Des Moines walk through the property as well to see if they have any interest in utilizing it, utilizing the property for refugee housing or low-income housing. Other than that, if you want to move forward with this, just be able to close in the next couple of weeks. Happy to address any questions you have.
Adam? Does Lutheran Family Services, have they? Are they still open to do that? Have you had any conversations with them?
Last time I spoke to them was about two weeks ago. They said, once you have access to the upstairs, let us know. We'd like to walk through it. We anticipate being able to use it.
Thank you.
As long as it's a acceptable condition, they would likely be able to maintain that property. As well for continued use, knowing that it's likely to continue to be in service for. Maybe five or more years until there's enough property aggregated for redevelopment. So I think that alleviated any, most of their concerns about having to maybe put some money into that to keep it in a occupiable position.
Thank you.
What happens if they don't, if neither of the, the groups that you've discussed want to, they decide due to whatever reason, they don't want to come in and. Use this house. What, what is our next game plan? Will it stay vacant or what, what will we do then? Will we become landlords or?
My recommendation would be to demolish the property. You do have the option to, to lease the property. You know, it's, it's in serviceable condition. It has an active rental permit, but I guess I don't know that it's a great use of staff resources to have to continue to monitor that and put money into it. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll find somebody that can put it to good use for the short to medium term, but if not, my recommendation would be to demolish it.
Thank you. Can you also tell me, after this purchase agreement, how much would be left in the economic development? Fund?
I can give you approximate numbers. After this expenditure, the airport expenditures, we would still have, I believe, just enough to pay for the potential mural and patio project and that fund would be exhausted. However, our intention is to replenish that fund by potentially funding this through a general fund acquisition. And then repaying that as TIF proceeds come back in to keep a healthy balance in that economic development fund in case other expenditures or other properties, an opportunity to make those purchases come up. Is that a fair summary, Rochelle? Rochelle says yes.
How much is the, how much is the, the mural and how much, or how much is that amount that's left that you're talking about?
I believe the murals estimated budget in the draft development agreements, like fifteen thousand, and then it's another fifteen thousand or so for the parking and street reconfiguration off that. So approximately thirty thousand, I might be off a little bit on that, but.
That's assuming that comes to fruition at. Ever.
Correct. We still have a trailer with our old wooden patio that Public Works would very much like to get rid of and repurpose, so we're anxiously awaiting a decision on our development partners on that and, and the restaurant.
Any other questions? Further discussion? I don't believe anyone made a motion.
Move to approve.
I'm a second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
No.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Five E, consideration of resolution number twenty-twenty-five ten, a resolution approving FY twenty-six non-union salary ranges.
Move to approve.
Second. AJ?
Yes, it's been several years since we've done a salary study. We've recently completed one through Pontefex, who the city utilized last time. After finance personnel committee discussions, we looked at a specific process to do this study. It was to look at rural communities, suburban communities and exurb communities, aggregate those three types of communities to create those salary ranges for us, given our kind of unique conditions as a very small metro community. It's kind of hard to compare us directly to Des Moines or Urbendale, but at the same point, it's difficult to compare us directly to those rural communities that are going to have different wage structures as well and different populations. So that is what we did. We, we were able to get those comps from those three types of communities for almost all positions, the exception of some FD positions and police administration and public work operator positions for one of those, each, in each of those categories. We also highlight in the report that most of non-union staff has been in the position for less than two years. We highlight some midpoint salary ranges in there that typically equates to a five to seven-year experience range, and so we just, by the nature of turnover here, we have a lot of folks with limited experience, although some people are coming from other cities or other equivalent positions. Also note that our public works team is a little unique, that we do not have a sanitary sewer or water operations department. Not to say that they don't have a diverse range of skills that they need to all complete, given it's a small team, but there was, because of that narrow scope of operations, a reduction to those comps of ten percent to the public works management side and the city administrator position. Personal Finance Committee has taken a look at this, seemed comfortable with the salary ranges. We're only recommending a couple of immediate adjustments based off of the proposed ranges. The first is the city clerk, an increase of thirty-five hundred dollars to get them just above that minimum range. And the second is the finance HR director, who's been here six years. I always mix that up. Six years. So right at that midpoint stand of the, where you'd expect her to be in the salary range, so to catch her up to that five thousand dollar non-cola increase for this fiscal year and next, would get her into that, close to that midpoint. No other immediate adjustments were recommended, just kind of want to note, I guess, that as staff hopefully, hopefully stays and get closer to that five to seven years of experience, you see a push to get folks' salary towards that midpoint. And then in reflected in the proposed ranges, there is one other change beyond the ten percent reduction on the public works management side, and that is the police administrative coordinator. She is our most senior employee. She is currently just above that maximum range to allow for at least a small cola increase next year. I've recommended increasing that maximum to sixty-eight thousand five hundred, which would equate to about a one-point-two percent raise for next fiscal year. Happy to answer any questions council might have. Otherwise, the adoption of this would give us direction as we go through the performance appraisal and raise process next fiscal year.
Questions, discussion?
I think we had good discussion of personnel and finance, so we're good.
I'm good.
Roll call.
Susan Skiers?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Five F, discussion on the CIP.
Move. Second.
It's just a discussion item, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? We just get to talk.
Oh.
You just get to talk. I get to listen.
Keep talking. Aaron.
Chief?
Need some help.
All right, I guess just as a starting point, as we get into the budget season here, and Justin and Andy and Rochelle, feel free to chime in as we go through this conversation, but. We are aiming to have our levy, our property tax levy be pretty stable for the next fiscal year, either flat or one or two cents. Three cents. Rochelle's getting ambitious over there. Decrease to our levy rate, so that's our goal coming into things going forward. Also note that the CIP for the next five years is fully funded based off of where we stand on known tax policy today, subject to change of what might happen at the State House. But what you see in the CIP, we either have anticipated lost road use tax or already obtained road use tax TIF dollars or other revenue sources in place to be able to pay for those improvements. So I'm going to talk through just kind of the next few years, kind of per category of what we've got coming up. If you've got questions on other projects that are listed in the CIP, feel free to stop me as I kind of work through it. But we could be here all night if we tried to talk through everything and, and when you start getting six, seven years out, you know, things have a tendency to change, so. First one I'm going to talk about is the Forest Court overlay. This is a project scheduled to happen this calendar year. Bolton Mink took some borings of underground conditions. Unfortunately, they weren't what we'd like them to be, and so we did evaluate, and there's a staff report here, specific to Forest Court overlay, you're welcome to take a look at. But we did evaluate some alternative projects to do reconstructions, knowing that. the estimated cost to reconstruct Forest Court would be uh in excess of one point five million. Ultimately, we landed on uh staff recommendations to just move forward with the Forest Court Overlay. And I think Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee were comfortable with that recommendation. We've got a lot of roads in town that are going to need some TLC in the next couple of decades, and the reality is we're not going to be able to reconstruct them all in the timeline that we'd like to. So this will uh significantly improve the conditions of Forest Courts. It'll buy us time. Um and uh Public Works can be focused on uh maintaining those roads and trying to get as much life out of that uh improved quality as we can. So the summary is we're recommendations move forward with the overlay, not to pursue a reconstruction, which would um complicate the project, require additional engineering and significantly expand the project cost. Um and you'll probably be looking at similar decisions going forward as we do underground testings um and have to make the difficult decision to probably move forward with um some limited resurfacing on roads that are uh even their underground conditions are in uh a less than desirable state. So welcome any feedback on that. Otherwise, our goal would be to put this one out to bid probably in the next thirty days uh so that work can proceed uh the summer of twenty twenty five. Couple other products I want to highlight and get specific feedback on are Colby Park improvements. Uh so obviously, our wrapping up uh the spring, some significant improvements to Colby Park. We'll have the food truck plaza and the seating and the lighting uh completed there. We recently got the water access grant. Uh that comes with an obligation to complete those improvements in twenty five or twenty six. Uh and then we have some additional park improvement projects kind of slated uh as to be determined timelines out there, and we're thinking about kind of the order of operations there. There are some storm sewer improvements that need to happen uh going through the park to increase uh capacity uh coming off of all those adjacent adjoining streets from School Street. We'd like to get that work done next. Uh and then proceed with the tennis courts uh or the pickleball tennis court kind of area as TIF funds become available, and that will be partially contingent on what happens with the raise grants uh and other TIF projects. Uh and then move on uh as funding allows to the the fitness circus uh portion of the Colby Park master plan. Uh those are kind of the order of operations we discussed at the Public Works and uh at the Finance Committee, it seemed to be folks were comfortable with that. But again, welcome feedback and priorities uh of how those should fit into our overall program and or uh operating off that presumption that we do that as TIF funds are available. Uh a new project on the CIP this year is sixty fifth Street Storm Sewer Project. Uh so the idea would be to uh create a storm sewer along sixty fifth Street, uh potentially connect it out to sixty sixth Street. Uh there's not currently any intakes uh for the first block or so, block and a half south of University Avenue. This would add an intake uh in that vicinity directly west of where the Windsor has been constructed. So it would give us stormwater intake on sixty fifth and also potentially have the ability to work with the developer of the Windsor to add an intake uh just offside of that spreader so that in a very high rainfall uh event, that spreader could shed water into our storm sewer system. Uh there's already prior to the Windsor um existing conditions that have led to flooding for some residents in that area. Uh there's multiple sump pumps out there, and so it's an area that we'd like to get storm sewer on, uh given the Windsor project uh occurring too. Uh we felt the need. It was just it felt it was a good idea to prioritize that, and some of the feedback from the committees was to to push that up as high as we could on the CIP list. And so it's currently proposed after committee feedback for twenty twenty seven construction out of the Stormwater Fund. We've also added in here, knowing that we've got a public art master plan in the works, and that will be on uh forthcoming agenda for discussion uh with Liz Lidget, uh how we want to potentially pay for some of those future public art pieces. Uh that master plan is going to identify some areas, kind of the maintenance and the costs associated with that. Talked about this a little bit at the Finance Committee uh about working with uh third parties and partners to help try to fund some of those public art plans uh pieces going forward, such as the mural uh or something in front of the Windsor and Colby Park. Uh Bravo is one obvious potential funding source for that, although funding discussions are ongoing about uh who's going to be participating in Bravo going forward. Uh the foundation was also brought up as a potential partner as well. Uh I know they'll be coming to the next meeting to talk about their funding request to the city uh with intentions to kind of shift their programming a little bit for next year, given funding constraints that they have. Uh so I think it's probably going to have to be a joint effort of some uh city funding, but hopefully also some third party funding uh that would come into the public art investments as well for those uh pieces to come to fruition. Right now, I haven't programmed in there just kind of uh periodically. Uh but if there's specific feelings on uh when and where we want to start placing those pieces and uh additional detail, I think some of that will take shape as part of that uh master plan presentation that we'll have here in a couple of weeks. Uh beyond that, we have a public safety building um item that was added to the CIP as well. Uh our estimate is we have about one point two million dollars that could be dedicated towards renovation of this facility. Um our suggestion right now is to park those funds uh as we continue to work through that space use analysis and other conversations to determine what those renovations want to look like. Uh we've also had space use analysis committee meetings about alternatives for the city council chambers and or moving City Hall to accommodate of change of locations of the city council chambers. But as of right now, the goal is to just uh set aside for future use that one point two million or approximate amount of funds so that as uh the shape and the size of those public safety building renovations take shape, um we have those funds available to do that uh in the next few years as those roof and HVAC needs, along with some other renovations, become pressing. Those are the main ones for feedback. Otherwise, things look very similar to the past, just as a reminder on some of the road reconstruction projects. Uh next up, we've got reconstruction of Seventy Fourth Street. That'll be a two-year project with storm sewer happening hopefully in twenty twenty five, subject to getting all the easements we need. Uh letters just went out, I think, this week to property owners that have storm sewer uh infrastructure on their property to notify them. We'd like to sit down and have conversation with them about either rewinding or making improvements to those storm sewers. So we hope that work will take place this calendar year, and then the road reconstruction itself uh take place in twenty twenty six. And then in twenty twenty eight, we have Sixty Seventh Street Reconstruction, School to University Avenue. Uh that project um will be a pretty substantial one at three point eight million dollars. Uh and then we get into four, or excuse me, Sixty Fourth from Forest Court to Sunset. Uh with that, we start funding with our twenty twenty nine bond, which will be our next bond of funding Sixty Fourth Street and Seventy Sixth and Maryland Drive. So those are the ones that I talked about as we anticipate having a funding source available for those and feel pretty confident that those can move forward in those timelines without any significant changes to the levy. Uh again, expecting that twenty twenty nine bond levy and not any uh significant changes to our ability to levy uh for those improvements. Any questions on the reconstruction projects?
AJ, just a quick question. Going back to your murals, the artwork, um all of that. Uh did we apply for any of the grants, like the park grant of the Park Foundation? Don't quote me on what the name completely is. Um but I know that uh at the League um of Cities event, they talked about how they uh provide thousand dollar grants um to a lot of the the communities that are ten thousand people and below um with population. So I didn't know, I think last year we might have applied for that and used that um for maybe the the bike trail, but um don't quote me on that one either.
I'd have to dig into that a little bit. No, we we did not apply for any specific grant related to public art other than the master plan this year.
I know that that um the grant program ends January thirty first, or you have to have the application in by January thirty first. Um I had gotten an email about a week ago um it to kind of jog the memory. Um and obviously, I didn't uh forward it on, so I apologize.
Are you talking about the um Iowa Foundation for Parks and Recreation mini grant?
That would be it. Yes.
I'll forward it to you. Thanks. Andy Rochelle, any other comments on the reconstruction side? Jumping over to the overlays and mills, then, uh we have Forest Quartz uh that we talked about uh planned for this year tentatively. Uh and then twenty twenty eight, Mott Avenue. And in twenty twenty eight as well, Seventy Seventh Street, Maryland Drive to College. Uh the goal would be to bid those two projects together because they're small ones, smaller in size, uh to get one contractor to come uh and do that in a cost efficient way. Pavement present uh private preservation, uh continuing crack ceiling of residential streets. We've got a number of projects that are going to be happening on University Avenue in twenty twenty five. Uh sealing of the streets, striping of it. And Andy, am I missing one as well? Yes. Seal coating. Uh so you see a lot of active work uh on University Avenue in twenty twenty five. Uh you also see in uh the report section of this, the DOT, you'll be doing some work this summer at Sixty Third and University uh during overnight hours, I believe it was, wouldn't be closing that intersection um at least during any peak times. Twenty twenty seven, number of pavement prev- preservation projects as well with Wilshire Boulevard, Colby Avenue and Sixty Sixth Street. Uh and then some patching and crack sealing on Seventieth and Twenty Eight and Twenty Nine. Storm sewer projects, uh looking at Wilshire Boulevard Storm Sewer Project um in this coming year. Uh we've already started some work on that. The cost of that project's come down as we've decided to move that intake closer to Seventy Third Street, uh not have to reconstruct a large portion of Wilshire uh further to the east. To be able to do that, uh it's likely we'll run into some other similar projects along that stretch of town as well, as we've got a lot of backyard stormwater easements that are starting to collapse, recreate sinkholes. We're going to finish um our televising project. It's been a three-year project uh so that we've got the entirety of our storm sewer system televised and mapped out better this year as well at fifty thousand dollar cost. Uh and then in twenty twenty seven, uh as I mentioned, the Colby Park Storm Sewer Project will be the first of a series of Colby Park projects. Uh and then that sixty fifth Street Storm Sewer Edition. Streambank stabilization. There's a Bolton and Mink report done several years back uh that highlighted a few potential streambank stabilization projects. Uh so we're going to start chipping away at those. Uh we have the number first project that's listed in that report uh slated to occur as part of Seventy Fourth Street this year. And then in twenty twenty nine, uh a second uh stabilization project, some Creek Bank um stabilization uh slated for as well, both paid for out of the Stormwater Fund. The flood reduction section of this uh doesn't have any changes. We've identified a number of potential projects uh that are very expensive in nature, and we don't currently appear to be positioned for federal funds to complete any of those, but we're leaving them on there for awareness purposes. Parks and Trails, uh again, the water trails access, the Sixty Third Street sign and barrier that we talked about recently. Uh we were applying for it. It was in the consent agenda today, a TAP grant to start reconstruction of some of the city trails as well. I've also added this some additional trail reconstructions at the tail end of the CIP, knowing that um the conditions are continuing to worsen out there, and we will need to invest some serious dollars into the trail um over the next decade as well. Uh I did neglect to mention previously as well, the parking lot reconstruction. Uh we have that slated for potentially twenty twenty eight, and recall, we've got the potential art bridge uh that might go in yet this year as well. So we'd like to keep that one uh fairly high on the list for park projects uh funded through TIF. Uh but we'd like to get that storm sewer project done uh prior to that so that we're not damaging that new parking lot. And then the last one in there is the public safety model remodel, which, as I mentioned, uh we feel that we've got adequate cash uh on hand or that will be generated uh and not otherwise allocated to the CIP to set aside about one point two million dollars for renovation of this building in some shape or form uh in the next couple of years. So again, this has been through a couple of committees. Um we've gotten some feedback, made a couple of adjustments to it, but welcome any other feedback council has now or over the next coming of weeks as we uh start heading towards that CIP uh public hearing in March.
Yes.
We're speaking in March.
All right. Any uh questions or discussion on all of that? All right. Thank you, AJ. Um six A reports. Um I'll have a written report next time around. Uh just wanted to mention uh that the president uh issued a number of executive orders. One of them was for, I believe, unleashing energy. Um and it put a pause on the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act. Um and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act is what uh disperses all STBG funding for every MPO in the United States, including ours. Um so there's some confusion about what that means. They think it means that it is more geared towards green energy efforts. But they're going to get clarification on that.
Mayor, I'd just note, too, the raise grant is potentially subject to those changes as well, but again, it's not anticipated based off of interpretation to be impacted.
Yes, they think that may um the elements of racial justice may be removed from that. The requests for STBG funding are forty six million dollars. This time around, last year, seventeen million dollars was dispersed, so um probably about the same amount is going to be dispersed this time, so a very competitive market for grants. Ms. Harms?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I've been very busy. Um uh communicating in more ways than one. Um as you know, the legislative session started, but I'm not even going to talk about that. So January ninth, we had Communications Committee. Thank you, Adam, for and and AJ for um um helping lead that up and did some planning for twenty twenty five. Um really would like to um make sure that we're doing communications with our businesses. Um um looking at, you know, opportunities to continue to do uh communication surveying. Um some of that convers- those conversations are also happening on the MAC side of the equation and what we can be doing there and then um uh potentially doing some sort of podcast initiative. So um lots to more to come on the communication side of the equation. We also had a Personnel and Finance uh committee meeting, of which Adam just did a great job uh covering everything that there are most of the things we we talked about. So um so thanks, AJ, on that. Um attended the West Side Legislative Breakfast on January tenth. Uh lots of great conversations about property tax and the impact on that. Speaking to property taxes, everybody should have gotten the um email from Central Iowa Taxpayers Association. I bel- I think that Art Whitmac, if you had didn't read his article or his update um on um uh property tax changes and kind of encouraged being the legislature to kind of pump the brakes and take a look and really talk with local leaders um about the impact of what changes they may um implement. Um so I just encourage you to take a look at it if you haven't yet. I thought it was a good read. Um Mac was on Tuesday morning. We were up at the State House. Uh Mayor Jones uh joined me for for that meeting up there. Um lots of discussions uh with, we had four uh new area legislators join us um for that meeting, and I believe we're going to continue to meet during the legislative session of the State House. So um back to doing that, kind of, we did that previous to COVID, and now we'll be back to, I think, doing that. I think it's a it's a good way to really connect with local legislators. So um in the in the bigger metro area. So um one of the things that um we were asked and and that was a result of, I sat on the Resident Engagement Committee for uh MAC, it it that we talked about was doing education on how property taxes are used and how they're generated, just general education on property taxes. It seems to be a huge topic, not only um with legislators at the State House, but, you know, amongst our constituents as well. So helping folks understand not only how So helping folks understand not only how, you know, how you're how your property taxes come about, but then also how they're utilized in our community. And so I think that there's a lot of confusion amongst people that they don't really understand. They just think that we're consistently deciding here whether or not we're going to raise their property taxes, and it's really not. It's kind of within our space, but not, you know, not all. And so, and especially because we've consistently been working to reduce the levy here in Windsor Heights and very proud of that. And so taking kind of that message to the street to help residents better understand that. So that's one of the things that MAC and our our resident engagement group is which is going to be a long, more of a long-term communications plan that we can be consistently doing or communicating with. Across the metro, we're identifying some of those topics and those ways of doing communication, which might include some video types of things you can close post on social media and that sort of thing. So Mayor, I don't know if you responded to Courtney or not about Windsor Heights's engagement in that, but that was a request from us. Every every merit to kind of just engage, decide whether or not we want to be part of engaging in this broader resident engagement on this, you know, metro wide effort. So I do think there is Windsor Heights could benefit a lot from the tools, resources and expertise that the larger cities have access to, whether it be, I did talk a little bit with Clive folks, the fact that they do some video, you know, posts and stuff like that, being able to work with and have some access in that space. So I would encourage us to think about and do that. And then Metro Waste Reception was on Tuesday evening. Again, Susan and Mike both joined that again, opportunity to have conversations with legislators and help understand who Metro Waste is and the statewide partnerships that they engage in. And tomorrow morning, we will have a debrief on Windsor Wonderland. So it feels like a Windsor Wonderland cold tundra outside, but at 8:00 AM. So if you have any suggestions or recommendations for Windsor Wonderland, please feel free to send those over. We welcome them.
Get the same weather that you had last this year for for Windsor Wonderland on repeat because that was
I will put the request in. Thank you all.
Ms. Campbell.
Just a couple of quick updates. Attending the Reimagine DART workshops with Commissioner Jones. We had one last week. That was really good. I'm really proud that both of us are able to go and make sure that we're representing Windsor Heights well. Special events planning for 2025 is obviously well underway. Sponsorships open tomorrow and huge thank you to Susan for doing such a great job of fundraising for special events. That is no easy feat and super appreciated that I don't have to do it. So that's it.
Mr. Libby.
Thank you, Mayor. January 8th. I was present at the Public Works Committee. On January 9th, we had our Communications Committee meeting. Lots of things discussed and good stuff going forward. I think we cannot, we can never over communicate to our residents. January 10th was a legislative meeting at the CEC. January 25th, this coming Saturday, is the Urbendale Meet and Greet with Leaders and Coffee with Council, for me, is also 10:30 until noon on the 25th. Considering if I'm over whatever crud I've got at that time. So that would conclude my report, sir.
Jones.
I think the West Side Legislative Breakfast was really nice to be in Windsor Heights, and that worked out really well. And so go us for hosting our our friends from the West Side. So it was really good. As Lauren mentioned, we've been back at it with DART. And I think things are moving well. We ended the year with I think everyone getting everything off their chest that needed to be said amongst the communities. And now we're all moving forward to figure out this one year of figuring out transit. So I will stop there to say I am very, very pleased that all of us are on the same page. And I appreciate everyone's support for public transit and what that means for our metro community. And I know that you all share the same passion I do for it and desire for us to find ways to work out solutions. So that's been good. So Lauren said, we had this, I had the opportunity to do double meetings on last Monday where we had one commission conversation and talking through some things having to do with with DART and the future of DART. One thing that stood out to me is they mentioned the stat that since 2009, we've had a 24% population growth in the metro, but DART's budget's only grown about 2%, 1% in that time period. And so, I mean, that's, that in itself says a lot about how we need to think about this. The second part was an interactive workshop that there are only four commissioners that were there for, but the rest were community leaders, city leaders from the staff and admin side who were there. And we did an interactive workshop for a few hours. And it was this real push for people to understand that we're having these conversations where there's lots of choices to be made, and there's lots of give and take, particularly in terms of talking about coverage, so making sure that every particular city and entity gets a touch or frequency and trying to get ridership up and getting more people to population centers to where they need to be. And so we had to had six different groups all have to build their own transit system. And when we talked through why we chose the designs we chose and, but I think it really helped to bring home some of the things we've been discussing overall, made it very concrete for folks to understand, or at least try to understand that there's there's some things you lose by trying to hit everyone everywhere. And there's some things that you really gain by, you know, concentrating some things and moving populations from centered areas to where people are trying to get to. And so I feel very encouraged by some of the conversations amongst the commissioners that's happened since then, just in terms of people understanding where we need to go. It's going to be a lot of tough decisions. But at least I think when we get to in the process, we'll have some very informed decisions on how we how we move forward. So feel pretty good about that. I'm going to ask Adam to give to copy this and give you guys all a PDF of this. So this gives you the the timeline and kind of gives an update of kind of the process. So you can have that for quick reference in case anybody asks you about the reimagine process. Oh, yeah. So in in April, we'll have to put that on our agenda for one of our two April meetings to have a discussion and have Dart come out to visit or someone from Dart to come out to visit. So we can have kind of discussions on how we how we want to go, which which direction on that spectrum of coverage versus ridership we we want to to lean on. And I hope that we can come to easy consensus on that, knowing that we'll probably have to negotiate at some point. But, you know, if we were to choose somewhere on the spectrum, where would we we lean as a city. So want to make sure that each of the councils has those discussions. So we don't have any question whether or not the people at the table representing those cities have had full conversations with their councils about their perspective. So that will happen in the spring. Thanks, Eric.
Scaries.
Can I just ask, Joseph, you talked about with DART, the, you said 24% population growth. What was the year? Could you remind me?
2009.
Okay. And then, so it's 24% population growth since 2009, and the DART budget only grew by 2% since then?
1% for DART growth.
Thank you. This has been kind of a busy month since we last met. I might take these out of order, but I will agree that the West Side Legislative Breakfast was great. It was nice to have it in our community, and I heard a lot of nice comments about the Community Event Center. So that's, that's always great to hear. Public Works, Special Events, we met since the last council meeting. As Lauren said, we're starting to plan all of the events. It's hard to believe that it's time already to start planning Fall Festival and all the funness that comes around with the Fall Festival, but we're starting and I think we have a pretty good pulse on getting this accomplished early. That is, has been Lauren, and my goal is to complete the timeline and get things done early that we can to make it easier on us closer to Fall Festival. A little teaser, Cumulus Radio is on board with us again for the special events. So they will be attending at least three events. But they will also be doing some filming in, kind of in the park, kind of where's danger at with pictures, kind of along with what Jason did with the access group. Emails, you know, where's, where's Jason? This will be where's danger? Where's Lindsay? Trying to get people excited about movies in the park, about our Touch a Truck ribbon cutting, all of that fun stuff. So we will also have some great little film, little 30-second clips that will go up on our social media site to get people excited. So that is a great thing for us. Thank you to everyone who attended the Metro Waste Authorities event on Tuesday. As Teresa said, it was a great event. It's always nice to see the number of people that care about recycling and the the trash and how we are going to make this a sustainable process through the next 20, 30, 40 years. We were even complimented by Mayor Edwards from Clive that Windsor Heights has the best attendance at the event, and he was very pleased with that. I had a Catch Des Moines meeting today and we will be featured as one of the the cities. I can't remember, we're still going back and forth if it will be April or May. But will be, they just did Indianola's, I think. So they go through and they have drone footage or they have pictures or whatever, trying to get, give little teasers on what will be or what we have in Windsor Heights. So I kind of put my my foot in on that and they said that they would do it before our ribbon cutting and include a lot about the reconstruction. So looking forward to working on that here in the the near future with both Adams. And we'll get this done and out to Brockett Catch soon.
Thank you, Susan. I forgot one thing for council, but also primarily for DART Commissioners, the MPO approved putting out an RFP for the Multimodal Economic Impact Study today, which has a significant. I think it's a lot of it for DART, honestly. And DART's going to apparently contribute to it as well. So I think they said by next month, they hope to have the the RFPs back and hopefully they will move forward with it. So just want to let you know that as well. Anything from you, AJ?
Just note the draft equipment revolving program is in the report section here. We will have department head presentations on that at a future council meeting. But if you have any questions or comments prior to that, let us know. Andy's looking forward to presenting about a potential brining solution for our roads next winter. So some pretty exciting stuff on there. Sanitary Sewer District met yesterday. Andy and I attended that. They are talking about a significant rate increase over the coming years as well, due to about a billion dollars in WRA improvements. Who's our WRA rep? No, wait, that's the Sanitary Sewer District. Anyway, so expect to see that increase potentially work through in the next fiscal year and incoming fiscal years as well. Adam, did you have one staff comment item too? Did we talk about that? Can't remember what it was now. No.
Is it bios updating for people like me who didn't get it back to you? I wasn't the last one.
A call out, yes.
Yeah, you probably shouldn't.
I thought it was a cell phone and, okay.
I did not have a checklist on that, too.
That's all I have unless one of the department heads said something.
Okay. Well, if nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Scares.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Please.